Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the August 3, 2016 meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. Would you join us in a moment of silence, please? Thank you. There are no changes to the agenda.
Madam Chairman, move for adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. We have minutes for July 15, excuse me, June 15 and July 6.
Madam Chairman, move for adoption, the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. For our committee reports, we have comprehensive plans and...
Madam Chairman, the CPPC Committee met on July 11. We reviewed the input received from our 2035 Comprehensive Plan Community Meetings and endorsed the incorporation of the input into the draft plan update. And there will be a joint work session with the Board of Supervisors will be held on August 17 of this year. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Marston.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see here now, Historic Resources Advisory Board, Mr. Klein.
Yes, Madam Chairman. Historical Resources met on the 20th of July with the, to consider the new fruit market on the west end of town. The applicant was there, they met with the Historical Society, and the only thing they decided to do was put gravel on the driveway to conform with the rest of the area around.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for going for us. Sanitation Authority, Mr. Unger.
Yes, ma'am. We met on 12th of July, and they had a couple of key items they wanted to go over. And the first one was reduction of the debt they have. With the interest being down as low as it is right now, what they want to do is try to pay off some outstanding debt. It's approximately $2.2 million. In the next couple of years, they can save about $230,000 in interest. So the goal is to get that paid off very soon. They never gave it time, but they're going to try to get that done real soon. And the other thing that was on the agenda was the multifamily rate for the structure of water and sewer. The way that's set up, a lot of times, if you get apartments and things, they'll get one meter for water and sewer, and it's not compensating the work that we have to do or that sanitation has to do as far as the operation's concerned. And what they're going to try to do, we're having a meeting on August 16 this month, and what they're going to base it off of is about 80% of what a regular 5A-inch water meter costs. And hopefully, and I'm not going to give numbers out, what we're trying to do is get it more in line with the single-family dwelling and make it more fair for the sanitation department because they're really not being... The other thing, I just want everyone in Frederick County to know is, they went beyond what they usually do last week. They had a lot of disasters. Pump went bad on the north quarry, ruined the whole pump house and done a lot of damage, and they got that back together very quickly. City of Winchester was extremely helpful about giving us or letting us have extra water to take care of the leak that we had. And then we had, I think, a rockslide in Stevens City Quarry that caused a little problem. And had two major leaks in Stevens City that we had to get fixed, and it was just a real tough week for them. And then I think one of the filters blowed up in the north quarry, and I didn't even know what a filter was, but it's as big as a tractor and trailer, and that was very devastating to them. And that shut them down for another day. And they really worked hard last week to get everything back on track, and I don't think a lot of people realized what they had to go through.
And then it rained.
Yeah, and then it rained.
We're happy to have Mr. Tegnesi from the City of Winchester Planning Commission.
Madam Chairman, our last meeting lasted 15 minutes. We had one item, and that was approving ordinance to change the certificate of appropriateness for the Board of Architecture Review. And that was it.
Thank you. We've done that, too, from time to time. Thank you, sir. And finally, from the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Don.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. On June 27, the Board of Supervisors passed four conditional use permits. First one was Conditional Use Permit 316 for Verizon Wireless to build 150-foot monopole at 143 Greenwood Road, which is the greatest brother-in-church. The second one was a Conditional Use Permit 516 for Edward Alvira to modify a nursery landscaping located at 1590 Fairfax Pike in White Post. The third one was a rezoning for Stoner Bridge Station, rezoning 416 for Stoner Bridge Station to rezone some M1 light industrial areas to B2 General District, and that was at the southeastern side of Martinsburg Pike Route 11 and the southern side of Stoner Bridge Boulevard. The last one was rezoning 516 for Seabee Ventures to rezone three acres from B3 Industrial Transition to B2, which is located in the south side of Martinsburg Pike and the northeast side of Amica Lane, which is Route 839.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. This is the time that we set aside for citizen comments. If you've got anything that you'd like to share with us, except what we're going to do with the agenda, we'd love to hear from you. Thank you very much. We will close the citizen comment portion.
Madam Chairman, I'll need to recuse myself from our first item on the public hearing items.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, and it's Conditional Use Permit 06-16 for Borden Real Estate LLC, which submitted for a public garage with body repair. The property is located at 151 Conestoga Lane, Stevens City, Virginia, and is identified with property identification number 85-8-5 in the Bat Creek Magisterial District. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Again, this is a Conditional Use Permit. Currently, the property or this Conditional Use Permit would be subject to its own RA rural areas. Its current land use is a public garage with body repair. It also has a residence on the property. That public garage with body repair is currently inactive. The proposed use will be a public garage with body repair with amended conditions. If I could turn your attention to the map on your left, the outline of the property. The property is, I won't blow it up, the property there is outlined in black. It's along Route 11, and again, as you pointed, Conestoga Lane. The adjoining properties are also all zoned RA. Their land uses are a church vacant and residential. The, this Conditional Use Permit also will have an illustrious plan, which we can come back to if there's any questions with any of the Planning Commissioners, Madam Chairman. Basically, this is a, real short and sweet, this is a request, updating and amending existing Conditional Use Permit for public garage. This property was subject to a Conditional Use Permit 01-90, was approved by the Board of Supervisors, March 28, 1990, for a public garage with body repair. Currently, the public garage is not in operation, and it does meet all the conditions that were set down by Conditional Use 01-90. However, there are two assigned conditions, and I think before this body, we've had this happen before, where back in the 90s and 80s, we assigned conditions which we don't use or we don't assign, I should say, anymore as CUP runs with the land. And there are two conditions where the Conditional Use Permit that was approved in 1990 was number three. In your agenda, I also put a, or staff has put the original conditions from this Conditional Use Permit, was there would be a one-year period, a permit that would be reviewed annually. And condition number four, if the use, occupancy, ownership of the property changes, this Conditional Use Permit will expire, and a new Conditional Use Permit will be required. Again, we don't, Conditional Use Permits run with the property. The applicant is here to restart the body repair or garage with body repair, so in order for him to go ahead and move forward, these two conditions had to be satisfied. So with that, Madam Chair, should the Planning Commission find this used to be appropriate, staff would recommend the following conditions. Number one, all review agency comments and requirements shall be complied with at all times. Number two, all repair activities shall occur entirely within enclosed structures. Number three, all external storage of parts, equipment, shall be screened from view from the surrounding properties by an opaque fence or screen less six feet in height. Number four, the hours of operation be limited from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. Number five, no more than four employees will be allowed. Number six, no retailing or wholesaling of auto parts or vehicles on the site. Number seven, no storage of inoperable motor vehicles on the site. Number eight, no more than five vehicles waiting for repair on the site at any time. Number nine, an illustrious sketch plan shall be submitted to and approved by Frederick County, and all the planned improvements shall be implemented prior to operating the business. Number 10, any expansion or change in use shall require a new Conditional Use Permit. And Madam Chair, in talking with the applicant, as you see, there's no sign for, no cottage occupation sign there. The applicant wished to have that, and I would amend this to put condition number 11, that the applicant, in speaking with him tonight, would like a cottage occupation sign for this public garage. And with that, Madam Chairman, the applicant, Mr. Cliff Borden, is here to answer any questions that you or any of the Planning Commissioners may have, and obviously, I'll answer any questions you'll have also. Thank you.
Mr. Chair at this point.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Or, on number eight, I've been back there before, and I know that's a very large structure. If that man's got 10 vehicles back there and keeps them inside, I don't see where we care.
As long as they're inside, obviously, any repair, just waiting, you know, waiting for repairs is what we have.
Five mean outside?
Yes, sir.
So he could have more inside if he wanted?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is he satisfied with that?
From what I've talked to him, unless he changes his mind coming up here, yes, sir.
Anyone else? Thank you. Yes, sir, would you like to come forward, please?
Thank you. I'm okay with all the amendments, and I appreciate you all giving me the opportunity, but if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything.
Is there any questions of the applicant? Yes, Mr. Unger.
Is there already a six-foot fence around there?
No, sir. There's a big hedge that blocks, blocks everything. There's a concrete wall that's probably partially that tall, but we don't plan on having anything outside, sir.
Where it's at, I don't even know why the man needs a six-foot fence back there. You can't see him in the road anyway.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Well, thank you, sir. We appreciate you bringing here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone like to speak regarding this Conditional Use Permit? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. And so...
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve CUP number 06-16 with all staff conditions. And I don't know about number 11 amendment, but do we have to do anything with that before we approve this thing?
No, we can just contain it within what we've done, so...
I move for approval.
All right. Second. Any other comments? Okey-dokey. Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Crane, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Oberg, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on September 14. All righty. The next item is also a public hearing item. It's Conditional Use Permit 07-16 for Ginger Teets, which submitted for a cottage occupation for the sale of archery supplies. The property is located at 3641 Greenspring Road, Winchester, Virginia, and is identified with property identification number 13-3-16 in the Gainesboro Magisterial District. Mr. Klein.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. For the record, my name is Tyler Klein, I'm a planner, and this is for Conditional Use Permit 07-16 for the Teets residents, and it is for a cottage occupation for archery sale, the sale of archery supplies and equipment at 3641 Greenspring Road. It's located within the Gainesboro Magisterial District. The site is presently zoned RA or rural area, and the current land use is residential. The proposed use, again, is a cottage occupation for the sale of archery equipment and supplies. This is a overview of the site, located south of Greenspring Road, which is located to the north of Route 522. This is the Teets resident, the Teets property. It includes a single-family detached home and several outbuildings, one of which will be used for the archery sales. The other is a storage shed. And here's the illustrious sketch provided by the applicant, where you can get a better idea of where the business is in relation to the residents and also the parking. The 203 Comprehensive Policy Plan of Frederick County provides guidance when to consider land use actions, the location of the proposed sale of archery equipment and supplies. Business is part of a county, part of the county that is planned primarily to remain rural in nature, and it's not current, not part of any current land use study. The Frederick County zoning ordinance does allow for cottage occupations in the rural area zoning district through the approval of a Conditional Use Permit. The proposed use will take place within an existing structure on the site. The applicant does not propose any new buildings as a part of this cottage occupation, and it will be generally compatible with the surrounding residential nature of the area. Should the Planning Commission find this used to be appropriate, staff would recommend the following conditions. All agency review comments and requirements should be complied with at all times. The applicant will be permitted, one, a small cottage occupation sign. The hours of operation shall be limited to 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Tuesday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Saturdays, and the business will be closed on Sundays and Mondays. No more than four customers will be allowed to visit the site per day, and there will be no additional employees beyond those residing on the premises. And any expansion or change in the use shall require a new Conditional Use Permit. The applicant is here this evening to answer any questions you may have. As is staff, thank you for your time.
Welcome. Any questions of Mr. Klein? Yes, Mr. Oats.
Four customers per day?
That's ridiculous.
That's, I guess, how are we going to regulate that? And the second thing is, doesn't seem like it's worth opening the business if that's all they get.
So the customer limit was set by the applicant, and I'll let them speak to that requirement. And as you all are aware, it would take a complaint from a neighbor for us to go out there and inspect and verify if there were more than four customers visiting the site in the day, but I'll let the applicant speak to that, the number that they provided staff with.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Would the applicant like to answer any questions that we have?
Actually, it's my wife. My name's Sean Teets, or Cletus, and the business is my wife's business, but I can answer anything that you have.
Would you rather see it be four customers at a time and not...
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, I think it might have been a misprint on my part, and I'm, I'm good with bows, but not too much with paper.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
Can we just strip that all together? I mean, I can't imagine him posing a problem with a VDOT, and that's the only thing I can see that would be a problem, not just, I wouldn't even put that on there.
VDOT has, they gave us the okay for 50 a day. That's 25 in and 25 out.
Fifty trips.
Yes.
Yeah.
It was in the material. VDOT gave that approval.
Well, it's at least giving 15.
Well, if they have approval for 50 a day, we ought to give them 25, because that's, that's the in and out, it's 25.
I'm fine with that.
They, they put up a box and checked the speeds on the road. Average speed was between 45 and 48 miles an hour, and they did a count. I'm not sure about the count, but they, they went the extra mile for me, and they really, really helped a lot.
I mean, I can see a couple buddies going in there at one time, and...
Yes, sir.
It'll take you longer.
No, sir.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
All righty. There's been a suggestion that we perhaps deal with item number four.
Yes, I think we ought to change, I recommend we amend item number four to 25 customers per day.
Second.
We'll still have the public hearing.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, we still have the public hearing, yeah.
Okay. We, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone to speak regarding this Conditional Use Permit?
Yes, very quickly, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. This is, it's going to be a high-end archery shop, and it's desperately needed, in my opinion. It's for high-end target shooters, the high-end 3D shooters, and people of that nature, and he's not even competing with the big box stores, because his equipment is way, way above it. And I've been out there several times. It's a, it's a perfect location. I'm personally going to help him with one issue. I think John Turnary came out and said he needed a handicap parking. I want to make sure he gets that with the right slopes and all that stuff and the correct sign. And I strongly urge that you approve this, because I'm personally going to go out there and purchase the high-end stuff from him, and I know several of the other people, and we just don't have any place to do that anywhere around here. We have to go to Lancaster, Pennsylvania.
Oh, me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak to this permit? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for, to move to approve Conditional Use Permit number 07-16 for sale of archery and sales supplies and equipment, with all the conditions set forth, with a note that number four, be changed from four customers per day to 25 customers per day.
Second. It's been seconded. Yes. Any other discussion? Okey-dokey. Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes. Crane, yes.
Oats, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Moan, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This also will go to the Board of Supervisors on September 14. Thank you. We are, we have a third public hearing item. It's a rezoning 07-16 of Cincinnati Road Reynolds LLC, submitted to rezone two acres from RP Residential Performance District to RA Rural Areas District. The property is located on Cincinnati Road, Route 657, approximately 350 feet west of Ashley Drive in the Red Bud Magisterial District, and it is identified by property identification number 65-8-46. Mrs. Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. This is a rezoning application to downzone two acres from the RP Residential Performance District with proffers to the RA Rural Areas District without proffers. Now, what this rezoning is seeking to do is eliminate the proffers associated with rezoning number 07-06, which rezoned the property from the RA to the RP District with proffers. If I can direct you to the screen on your left, subject property is outlined in black. You have Cincinnati Road, and then the cross-street referenced is the Ashley Circle. Now, this is the generalized development plan from the 2006 rezoning. What it shows was the required public street, as well as the four lots that were originally proposed with the rezoning. That rezoning called for four single-family detached dwellings, called for the construction of a new public road. It would have also required a homeowners association, as well as open space. So the applicant is now seeking to rezone the property back to the RA District and eliminate the proffers to allow for one, single-family dwelling. There's currently one dwelling on the property, which is an older mobile home, that would be removed and replaced with a newer structure. Now, the Eastern Frederick County Urban Area Plan of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan identifies the general area with a residential land use. The current RP zoning of the property, I would note, is in conformance with our land use plan. However, when you look at the current proffers on the property, it could make the development of the site impractical due to the proffer, the monetary contributions, the requirement for that new state road, the open space, the homeowners association requirements. So this is really just the land use overlay from the Comprehensive Plan. As you can see, the hatched yellow is the RP residential, and then across the street, you actually have future commercial designations as a redeveloped land use. And again, kind of more of a blow-up snapshot of that general area. You have that subject property in this location. And going a little further out, you have the Route 37 interchange up the street to the east in this, it's not drawn for me. You have the subject property, and then the future Plan 37, a little bit up the east. So the downzoning of the site to allow for that one single-family dwelling instead of the proposed four with the state road could be seen, seen as acceptable. You're returning the property back to the RA District, which is similar to the properties to the east, which are still similar size, two-acre RA lots up to the limits of where 37's proposed to go. And following up on that, due to the site's proximity to 37, this would really allow for future time to study, is the residential land use appropriate? It would put it more back into a holding pattern for future land use studies. And also eliminates the impacts that the three additional residential units would have on public facilities. So with that, following the public hearing, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Commission to forward to the board. I would be glad to answer any questions, and the applicant is here, should you have any questions.
Ms. Candace? Yes, Mr....
Perkins, good evening. I have, when I first saw the application, I really didn't have any issue with it, but after some additional thought, and also I received an email today from Joanne Leonardi, if I mispronounced that, I apologize, asking, any way that, Ms. Leonardi said that she could not, wanted to go on record against this for a variety of reasons. The fact that the comp plan calls for this to be residential, I don't see a basis that we could deny it, but the concern that I have is we're losing the right-of-way dedication for Cincinnati Road and additional trails. Is there any way to mitigate that or capture that or keep that as part of this application?
Correct. With the original 2006 rezoning, they did proffer right-of-way that would be determined, as well as frontage improvements. This new rezoning is eliminating the proffers totally, but I did discuss with the applicant that issue, and he's prepared to address that concern.
Okay, thank you.
And he can speak to that after I sit down.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Oats.
Since we are losing that, I didn't see any comments from VDOT as far as review. Did they, are they aware of this?
We did not get agency comments, just because of the downzoning.
Okay. Well, I think we probably should have, since we're losing right-of-way for the state, since they were party to it first to go around. Okay.
Anyone else? Anyone? Thank you. Would the applicant like to make any comments to us or answer some questions?
Good evening. I'm Carl Hales, a member manager of the Cincinnati Road Reynolds LLC. When we rezoned this back in '06, the market was looking good, and prices were going up. Land prices haven't gotten anywhere near back to where they were at that time. With the proffers, it makes it impractical, frankly, to develop it as it is. We are perfectly willing to dedicate the right-of-way that was concerned on Cincinnati Road prior to this Board of Supervisors meeting. We're also willing to put a deed restriction on that would not allow for any livestock or poultry on the property. Be glad to answer any other questions that you may have.
Yes, Mr. Unger.
I'm not sure if I understood what you were saying. Are you going to still let them have the right-of-way in case they need it for Cincinnati Road or for 37?
Yes, we're going to dedicate the right-of-way prior to the Board of Supervisors meeting.
Okay, and I guess another, I'm thinking with the plan, and I don't blame you for doing what you want to do, I can understand it completely, and not to mention, that'd be another 30 trips if you had four houses in there on Cincinnati Road which can't stand it. How about the houses below you? Have they, is it still RA or...
There are, the ones below us, I believe, are RA. The ones to the west of us are all RP, and some behind, behind us is Cincinnati Glen Subdivision, and that's RP.
I can appreciate the fact that you're still willing to do that, because it's going to be needed in the near future, I think, or soon, I hope.
I'm sorry, I couldn't...
But I'm glad you're doing that, because they are going to need to do something with Cincinnati Road in the future, so that's a good thing.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Oats?
Yeah, I appreciate what you said about dedicating the right-of-way. I would support it with that. As far as prohibiting livestock or chickens, as far as I'm concerned, keep that if you like it. I don't mind it.
Well, I suppose neighbors that are in the RP now might would have an objection, and we didn't want that to happen.
Well, your neighbors to the east, they're RA, and they can have chickens. I don't see why this person, this one can either.
Any other? With Mr. Oats. I like the road dedication, but I'd keep the chickens and livestock.
Be glad to do that.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address this rezoning for us? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. This is Red Bud.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to make a couple comments. I think to the citizen comment that we had received about, you know, the consistency with our comp plan and everything, and I certainly understand that comment. And I think, you know, looking down the line, you know, we certainly want to be aware that this is the urban development area. We do want RP zoning. We do want to, you know, get the density, et cetera, within our development area. But we're not precluding that in the future either through this. If anything, there's more opportunity down the line, potentially, for the adjoining properties to the east to come together, you know, if it's 20 years from now, 30 years from now, whoever, whenever it is. But I think probably get a better vision for the site, and maybe even the land uses change over time once 37, if it ever becomes a reality before we're traveling and things other than cars, you know, then that might, that might be something that could be discussed. But I really appreciate the applicant's willingness to proceed with the dedication of the right-of-way. I think that was the, the only thing that was a concern. Taking away the proffers makes sense. You know, it's one dwelling, it's what it is today, there are no impacts. So, you know, I certainly support this, and especially with, you know, the offer by the applicant to proceed with the dedication. I think that takes care of the community's needs very well, and I really appreciate it. I want to thank you for that. If there are no other comments, I'd recommend the Planning Commission recommend approval of rezoning number 07-16 for Sensory Road Rentals, LLC.
This is second. Any other comments to be made? Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marshton, yes.
Ambrogi, yes. Klein, yes.
Oats, yes. Kenny, yes.
Triplet, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Moan, yes.
And the Chair votes yes, and this also will go on September the 14th to the Board of Supervisors. We are concluded. Let's see, I do believe that we are, we are at the end of our agenda, and I shall share with you that we do have a meeting for August the 17th, two weeks from today. And we've got an agenda for our own meeting, and I'm going to ask Mr. Ruddy to share with us what the work session with the Board has brought us.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. Of course, it will be a busy August 17th, because we actually have two meetings. The Board of Supervisors picked that date for the joint work session, which we'll be holding at lunchtime. And of course, the work session is to hopefully advance the 2035 Comprehensive Plan update to talk about the four Comprehensive Plan amendments that have been received and reviewed by the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and then any other items that may be out there. We may have a little discussion on some proffers. So that will be what is in front of us for our work session with the Board of Supervisors. And as you mentioned, and we apologize, there'll also be a Planning Commission meeting that night with three items on it.
Very much. Everybody understand what we're doing? Okey-dokey.
Of course, lunch will be provided.
I don't see any, pardon me?
Lunch will be provided, obviously.
Oh, oh, yes, lunch.
Yeah, what about dinner?
Dinner, yeah.
It's worth a shot.
Okey-dokey. That's it.
For German?
Second? On favor? All opposed? Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Well, we'll see what works out to 17.